May 10th. We have a plan for that one? Nope. It was May 10th. Me? Nope.
So, we're just looking at the agenda right now.
Right, but the approval of the minutes line, May 10th.
A little bit of table. Yeah, we'll leave it on the agenda.
Then can we remove it from the agenda, either way?
So, motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Second?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so now the meeting of the 10th, we don't have members to vote on that one, so we'll table that till the next meeting. So, moving on to minutes of July 20th.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 20th, 2017, and permit as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so we have a land split on 73543 Fulton Street. But we don't have an application for funding for that application, so that needs to take place. But we can talk about the land split. So, does everybody have a print in front of them?
No.
No? Do I have the only print?
Yep.
Okay. So, we're talking about the Kraus property where the clinic was, where just a few months ago, we approved the new clinic. So, that's not going to happen. So, now it's up for sale and they want to make the clinic and the house to the south part of one property and add some property to the back. But nothing's finalized, we don't have final drawings. So, it has to go to a public hearing, being that it's a land split. So, really at this point in time, alls we're doing is setting a date for the public hearing. So, I think we can, Aaron Ferrari, you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so do you think you can have your drawing set? What's the first Monday, is that the second?
October.
Yeah.
Second October?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, everything, we'll have to have it 10 days prior to the meeting, so it can go to the planner.
Okay.
So, and then if you have that, can you have it in a email format, so we can send it to the planner rather than paper?
Hold on, yep.
Okay, so if not, then we just got to make sure that the paper gets there soon enough. So, then if it's okay with the planning commission and Dr. Kraus, we'll talk about what the final drawing's going to look like prior to the presentation at the next meeting. So, since that's a public hearing, the planner will be here at the meeting. Mr. Casey will be here. Okay, so if there's no discussion, can we set, just set the public hearing date and the time?
Uh, but what have we been doing for 7:45?
7:30.
Or 7:30, oh, because it is always, it's after, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, during the day.
Okay, alright. So, motion to set a public hearing for the land split for 73543 Fulton for our October 2nd regular planning commission meeting at 7:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, okay.
Becky, did you get all legs, I can't do it again.
Okay, so, so we have kind of a full audience, so I don't know what everybody came for, but the land split, there will be a notice, a public notice going out, and also a notice to the residents within 300 feet of that parcel. So, and at that time, we'll discuss the, what the split's going to be and what the property lines actually are. At this time, we just have a close proximity. Okay, so moving along. So, now we have the proposed occupant of the 73543 Fulton Street address. So, this is going to be proposed to be a residence and a dog kennel in the old clinic. So, that is a special approval land use, which will also require a special, or a public hearing. So, again, that's going to be, they'll go out to the same people that the land split notice will go to. And at that time, we'll talk a little bit about it this evening, but at that meeting is really when we'll kind of get into the nuts and bolts. But if we could talk about, with Dr. Kraus and...
Suzanne.
Susan?
Suzanne.
Suzanne, Suzanne and I and the planner will get together and make sure that the, when you come with your drawings for the split and your drawings for the proposal, they're kind of got all the i's dotted and a t's crossed.
Okay.
Okay. So, do you have anything, do you kind of want to address stuff and kind of let everybody know what you're doing?
Absolutely. I worked off the paperwork to come tonight, and it gives an explanation of what it is that I'm doing and what I'd like to do. And currently, I own a kennel with nine runs at my residence, and I would like nothing more than to move into the village with my business and my kids. The rent is about doing that. That would give me the opportunity, not so much to expand on the boarding, but offer other services as well into the clinic. Addressing a couple of the things, two, there will be two buildings, one is a 10 by 18 garden shed and one is a 14 by 24 garden shed. And I also passed out supplementary information on those buildings, and I also talked to Dennis about those. They're movable buildings, but they're not considered temporary structures. They would go in the, behind the clinic, next to the pole barn, so I can run electrical. Those two buildings would then be surrounded by a six-foot-high privacy fence and the green belt around it as to provide privacy and noise reduction and whatnot. Addressing the noise in regards to the kennel, I do not, I am not of the thought of dogs bark, that's what they do. I am, dogs bark, they go in the kennel. I have that, I have neighbors around me that aren't even aware that I have a kennel. I keep that very much under wraps. Any sort of odors or whatnot, my kennels are kept very clean. And with, especially with the fencing and whatnot, it won't even be noticed by the other property owners, especially being behind the clinic itself too. So, again, if you can review that supplemental information that I gave you regarding the kennels, that's the best way really to explain them. They're stick-built like a house, they're insulated, FRP panels inside, ceramic tiling. The fencing used for the kennel fencing is a professional grade. It's used in rescues and veterinary clinics, it's very strong, six-foot high. I do not socialize animals at my kennel, so there's very low risk for any sort of liability and injury to other animals. That also prevents fighting, and that cuts way down on the barking too. I have, in here, I, the waste resupple, and I was going to address that too, do I have to have a dumpster, or can I use a garbage can? And the reason for that question is, it would take me a long time to fill a dumpster, and I'd rather get rid of it on a weekly basis, my waste.
That's pretty much your thing.
Okay.
It's not necessary in our case that you have the dumpsters, just whatever your trash.
Okay, because it, in the ordinance is, it references a dumpster versus trash cans.
Well, most commercials do that.
Okay. There, there is one question that I have in regards to a sign, and I have a unique situation at the house right now, being that the house is up front in residential area, but I do need some sort of advertising in order to direct customers to where they need to be. And looking again at the ordinances, kind of every direction that I go, I hit a brick wall. So, I'm asking for guidance in that regard.
Well, Chris, Christie, you guys want to feel better?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's, so I personally, have you talked to Dennis about that? I mean, ultimately, a number of, you know, the signs go, you know, so what were the, what's the challenge? What's the, what's the roadblock you keep?
Okay, so there's actually a couple of different things that go into this.
Just a few blocks.
Mr. Delkey and I had talked about requiring a fence around the front yard of the property, and that's not a problem. If you look at my proposal, I have an example of the fencing that I'd like to use. It's a picket fence style, it's three-foot high. Putting that in the front yard, along with what the ordinance calls out for the height of a sign, would block the sign. So, my thought was, okay, I'll attach it to the fence, and then it, the ordinance says you can't attach it to a fence. So, I thought, okay, I'll make it higher than the fence, but I can't do that because the ordinance says it can't be any more than three feet high. So, I'm kind of asking, where do I go with that?
Is the existing sign already in front there?
Well, your, the property is a residential, so you're, you're kind of, you have, you have a unique situation where you have a commercial in the back and a residential in the front. So, your residential kind of will supersede your commercial, because that's what your zoning is, where you want to put the sign.
Okay.
But somehow, we'll work something out.
Okay.
So, and I don't think we, we were looking for a fence all the way around the property, just on the driveway side.
Okay. Actually, I kind of want it all the way around, split.
Okay, well, that's your.
Okay, so I will need some guidance for that, because I do need a sign. Right now, I don't have a sign at my house, and that really complicates things. So, we'll have to go, I want to abide by the ordinances and not cause a problem or anything. Possibly reworking the current sign that we have, or, like I said, attaching it to the fence that'll go on the property and, because it'll be low enough and it won't block any site. No changes will be, no grading changes will be made to the property, so.
No what?
Grading changes.
Okay. So, do you have an existing sign, if we can back up to that one?
I do not have a sign. But except the Kraus sign is.
Oh, the Kraus.
Yeah.
What's already there, I can't remember, I can't picture even now, I've taken enough visits in the last couple of years.
It's not the Kraus?
No, it's not the Kraus.
It's Grandpa's.
Kind of, if I could just back up here for a second. See, the Kraus clinic has been in Armada longer than Armada has had zoning ordinance. So, what we're dealing with is a property that has been utilized for something prior to us actually having a zoning ordinance. So, now we're kind of trying to retrofit something that's already in place with new ordinances, so it's going to be something that we have to work through, but we can.
Okay. Going through the different points on the application, current number of employees, really, I only have two employees right now, other than myself, I have two girls that work for me. If I am not present at the kennel and the dogs are not sleeping for the evening, somebody's there to take my place and handle that situation.
So, are you saying that there will be somebody there all the time?
No, there's not somebody there all the time. If I am not there, the dogs are locked into the kennel.
Okay.
The days and hours of operation, and I'll also touch on the traffic too, the days and hours is, I'm open seven days a week, for the most part, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And at that point, I'm usually present in the kennels. We don't actually really close the kennels until 9 o'clock at night, but the dogs are in by seven, from 7:00 till 9:00, we're preparing for the next day, cleaning, filling water bowls, filling food bowls, whatnot. The traffic for my business is very minimal. For example, at the clinic right now, they have three, four doctors bringing in patients every hour. For example, I have people that come in in the morning, a few people during the day for grooming, and then they check out in the evening. If I get 10 cars a day, currently, that was a very busy day, because people make reservations for seven to 10 days out, if that makes any sense. And 8.3, 8.301, the sound standards, like I had mentioned, there'll be the six-foot privacy fence plus the green belt going around it. Odor is, proud to say, there's no issue with odor at my kennels ever. And B and D through K are not applicable on the performance standards. Schedule of required parking by use, the clinic in itself, the parking lot of this currently there, has more than enough parking available, I just have to stripe it and add a handicap van-accessible parking spot. If we go to the plans for the kennels themselves, it's a little bit, I know, architect draw. I show that the kennels are surrounded. I would like to mention though, instead of the gate going to the sides of the building, I'd rather now surround them with the privacy fence completely. The basic structure of both kennels is there's a building, and if you look at my supplemental information that I gave to you, it goes further into depth. But the building has interior runs for the dogs with shelter, they, heating, air conditioning, fresh water. Those interior runs open to exterior runs, those exterior runs open to a bigger play area. The play area in itself, to access it from the outside, has a double fence. So, you have to go in, close the door behind you, close, open the door in front of you, close it behind you in order to get to the play yard, sort of a security system. Those exterior runs open to a play area, and this is where I don't socialize the dogs. Everybody can be out in their exterior runs, but only one dog or one family of dog in a play area at a time. And if we're getting excessive noise, if somebody is not getting along, they can come back in, we can switch it around like that. I've learned to time it correctly, because some dogs just don't get along. And the larger kennel works exactly the same way. Going to my drawing, if you would look at that, the, I currently have them placed right with the 10-foot buffer from barn to barn, from the pole barn to the kennel compound, and then each building inside of the compound, if you will, will be spaced out the 10 feet according to the ordinance. But that's pretty much it for the kennels themselves. I have nine runs, I kept it small, we plan on keeping our boarding services small, so that they don't become overwhelming. I get lots of compliments on that, because there are much larger commercial kennels, where customers feel that their dogs get lost in the crowd. But we would like to add other services to the clinic, that we really don't need any licensing or whatever for kitty cat boarding, we would like to add in there, apparently that's a thing. And pocket pet boarding, which is hamsters, gerbils. I also do at-home pet care too, and a lot of what we go to other people's homes for are these small pocket pets. And it would be, I think, more advantageous to everybody if there's somebody not coming into your house for a gerbil, bring them to me, fresh water bedding every day. And then, we were possibly thinking about doing some dog training, if we can find the right trainer. I don't see any of those activities adding to the traffic or confusion or anything going forward.
Okay, well, that's a pretty good explanation.
Okay.
So, the thing that we're going to need before the next meeting, and same as is going to go for you as for Dr. Kraus, is your drawings are multi-sheeted, we need everything to be on one piece of paper. So, the location, so you have, you've shown your dog runs, your kennels and stuff, but, and how you're going to, what everything's going to kind of look like, but it needs to be on one piece of paper, so that we know the layout of, that's not going to. So, it's got to, the graph paper is nice, but it's very confusing to look at, so it needs to be on a bigger piece of paper than an eight-and-a-half by 11, so you can show dimensions, you can, because you, let's just kind of, for instance here, you've got the clinic on one eight-and-a-half by 11, you have a, the combined dog runs on another eight-and-a-half by 11 in each dog run in kennel area on the eight-and-a-half by 11. We need to, so that's all good, but you need to have it so that we can see what your whole layout is going to be. So, part of that is going to be for your setbacks, and then we'll talk about that within the next week, to solidify where everything's going to, where everything's going to fit the ordinance.
You're asking for a site plan, pretty much, right?
Yeah, you, yeah, you need a proper site plan, this really isn't it.
Okay.
But it got you through the first step, so it's fine.
Okay, okay.
So, in that site plan, you talked about parking, but you're going to have to lay out your parking, and we know that, you know, there's, like you said, there's enough parking there, but you're going to have to lay it out on your drawing. There's other things that are going to have to be on the drawing, your lighting, your exterior lighting, so, and if you're not going to have a dumpster, you know, you have to say that, so, you know.
Who can work with that?
Becky and Ben, the two Bs. Okay. Christie?
I'll make the cover.
Chris?
Now, we consider having two public hearings the same night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we made a motion to.
Yeah, so for a special approval land use for, how do you want to word that? What is we going to say on that?
How about 73543 Fulton Street and, what do you call it? What's the name of your?
Suzie's Bed and Biscuit.
Suzie's Bed and Biscuit. So, motion to set the public hearing for 10, or regular 10-2 meeting at 7:30 PM for the special approval land use for Suzie's Bed and Biscuit for 73543 Fulton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, okay.
Now, with that, same, same thing, we need the timing to have it in advance, so that the planner can get it too, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, to, I don't know, that, from the previous one to the same thing.
Ten days prior.
End of means the drawing's a little bit of a challenge, so you have 10 days to form.
So, and then, kind of, when you're doing your drawings, so, I just kind of looked, and I don't see anything that says Suzie's Bed and Biscuit.
Labelled.
Well, it's not what your name's going to be, it should be.
Put it on the drawing.
Put it on the drawing, so it's not even on your application.
Correct.
Because, is it Suzie's Bed and Biscuit that's applying, or myself?
Well, your, Suzie's Bed and Biscuit is, you're representing Suzie's Bed and Biscuit. But Suzie's Bed and Biscuit is actually the business that's going to occupy.
Because with the residential and that business, who's representing what and where?
Well, as a residential, you don't need to come to the planning commission.
Okay.
So, you're coming to the planning commission for the business, and that's what you need the special approval land use for.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Okay, any further discussion on Suzie's Biscuit? Bed and Biscuit? Okay, well, we got to lighten it up a little bit, one minute. Okay, so the next thing we have.
Did you vote?
Excuse me? Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did. Do you want to do a hand, just to make sure?
Oh, we have lights.
Okay, so the next thing we have is a sign request, but we don't have any type of an application again, so nothing official can happen after that's done. But, Mr. Belkey and I have talked about the sign. Ross, you want to talk a little about what you want to say?
Yeah, thanks. Sam's going to hand out some pictures, I didn't get included with the, with the request we put in. Well, we're not putting in tonight is a permit, that's going to go in through Dennis. What we're coming before the council on is to seek permission to put the sign in a location that you wouldn't normally find it in, in a, in a non-residential use in the business district. So, the Article 13 specifically says that we can come in and talk to you guys about getting approval to relocate the sign from what the zoning ordinance says is the first street-level facade or first-floor facade of the business. What we're trying to do is put it up on the second floor. So, if you take a look at the pictures, well, let me take a step back. So, this is an old historic building, and the zoning ordinance is specifically complementary of the historic business district, and in fact, goes on at some length to indicate that we need to be sensitive to the historic nature of the downtown area. So, to put a sign on the first-floor facade of the front of the building, really gets me into the original tinwork, and I don't want to disturb that, in fact, there was a piece or two that I have to try to restore. So, the building does in fact have bracket, bracketry up on the, the second floor, where a sign used to be quite a heavy sign, actually. And what I'm simply proposing is, instead of putting it at a minimum height of eight-and-a-half feet, which is what the ordinance says, with a 16-square-foot sign, maximum dimensions go up to 12 and 1/2 feet. By the pictures, you can see that that's perhaps 20. By the pictures, you can see that that's perhaps tweaking, may very well have to require drilling into that facade, which I don't wanna do. So if I'm able to put it on the second story between the fifteen-foot and twenty-foot mark, that clears all the ornamental tin. So all I wanna do here is get permission to, to do that, so that I can include that permission with the permit that goes to Dennis with all of the dimensional data, the deadload information, the, the wind pressure information that you get, the characterization of the materials and all of that kinda stuff. So, not my understanding that I had to have a permit in to do that, but simply come before you guys and ask for approval to put it on the second floor. Once that's done, once we have a decision on that, then that will go to Dennis as part of the permit.
So you're exactly correct. We do not issue permits, but we do issue approval for signs.
Right.
So you've shown where you want the sign, but you don't have any picture of the sign or any dimensions of the sign, or what the sign is gonna look like. So without that, there's nothing we could do.
I don't understand why that would be an issue.
Well, if, if.
If it's within the dimensions.
If you, if, if you come before, just like the Suzie's Bed and Biscuit, we discussed a sign, so it can be part of your site plan approval.
Right.
Or if it's, fits the ordinance, you can just go to Dennis. Send it, didn't fit the ordinance, you bounce back to planning. So then planning gets to approve the sign, also not just the placement of that sign.
All right, so you wanna see all that information as part of?
Because if we've approved the replacement of a sign and we don't know what the sign is, I don't think we're, I think we're derelict in our duty.
So then do we, still need a permit once, then it comes to plan?
Yeah, you just like the planning permission for, process to get a variance to put a sign up that you want.
But if you have all the information on the sign and all that, then do I still have to go get a permit for it?
Yes.
No, I think we, we do have to do that.
It's just the same thing as when you got approval for, when you opened up your, your hall.
Yeah.
We, we approved your operation, Dennis approved your, is gonna approve your occupancy.
Right. When we first came before you guys on the, the building a couple years ago, as part of that, we talked about the sign.
Correct, and you didn't have anything on the sign at that time, so.
No, but you did, you guys had specified guidelines, so can't be over a certain square footage and so on. So you want more specifics now, is what you're telling.
Again, if anybody has anything else, but you're gonna have to tell us what your sign's gonna be.
Ross, I think I have pictures of the original sign that was there.
I'd like to see those.
Yeah.
No, I don't, yeah, I don't, I think the sign will be well within the requirements of the zoning ordinance, but didn't understand that as part of this process, you wanted to see something specific. Doesn't really allude to that, but we can certainly bring that in.
So previous occupancy didn't use an awning and a sign, which a lot of them did. This one had the one on the corner. I'm trying to picture it, too, what was there before. And when did it come down? I don't even remember.
I don't, I don't ever remember a sign on that corner.
Nineteen sixty-eight it was there.
Yeah, well, okay, that's why I don't remember.
So, like I said, when it was, we had, what is it, the multiple pizza place, what did they use for signage?
I think they had awning.
Yeah, they had awning. Yeah, it's like, I don't remember what, like with the ace next door.
So, but then you're gonna have to do a site plan application again.
For what?
To come into planning, so you're gonna have to, you're.
Oh, for the sign approval?
For the sign approval.
All right, just the sign, not all for the site.
No, you're not doing, you've already been approved for your hall, and we, we worked quite diligently to get to you in your hall in that, the wide guideline that you wanted to use, so.
I thought they were in, in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
Well, they, they really weren't in the, but we worked it to get, because you had a multifaceted use, and that didn't really fit anything, so we actually kind of helped out with.
Well, it's, yeah, we made it, we made it all into the hall.
Yeah, because, right. And I think we had special approval land use for that, too, didn't we, because of the hall?
Yeah, it cost me a thousand bucks to do that.
Yeah, well, this won't cost you a thousand bucks.
Okay.
But if you wanna give us that, be coy.
None.
The village could always use it.
All right, so is that from the guidance, is that worth, is there any?
So we're just.
Hard to go, I mean, what?
We were tabling this till the next meeting, until we have further information, or whenever you come in with it, information, so it's the next meeting or whenever.
So Ross, you know what you need?
I think I do. I get surprised a little bit sometimes, but, so site plan review, you wanna see the specific sign?
Yeah.
Is what you would like to see.
Specific sign, so pick your sign out, you know, all the information that you're gonna give Dennis for the approval, we need that, too. You're actually gonna have to have your content of what your sign's gonna be, your specific sign.
The, the problem with some of this is if I put the sign on the second story versus the first story, the design of the sign may change. So I'm trying to fix as many of the variables as I can before I go back to the person that I gotta pay to do the sign and not pay him three times to do it.
Well, you're only gonna do the sign once. Your paperwork, your, you wanna put the sign in a certain spot, so you're gonna have to design the sign for where you want it to go, and then come in for us and, you know, and you can show it to Becky, or to the meeting and say, okay, take a look at this, is this gonna fit? You know, if not, then if you do it soon, then maybe it'll have time to revamp your drawing to come in to make something else, but, you know, you're gonna have to pick what you wanna have on your, what you want your sign to look like.
No, no, I, I understand. I've already got that, I just, again, it may, things may change based upon, if I bring a sign designed for the second floor, and you guys say, no, now I've paid for that design and I have to go back and do something for the first floor.
And then maybe I can't say that we're gonna approve what you want, what, what you're requesting.
Right. Yeah, but also they, too, I mean, it's basically, you're trying to do, you're doing a sketch, a mock-up of it, it didn't need to be the exact.
I, I guess that's what I'm.
Professional standard.
That's what I'm getting at.
And say, it's gonna say this, this, what text it's, what are you making it out of? How big is it gonna be?
Some of this is.
What's it, oh, it's lit and whatever, or if it's not.
In design or planning, some of it is still in that, in that part of the planning activity, but I wanted to get a determination of where it's gonna go, cause that'll help me design the sign with the sign fabric here. But we'll put, we'll put something together and we'll see if it meets the requirement. I may not have all of the information quite to the detail that Dennis perhaps would want on the building permit request.
Okay, so just kinda, one thing that isn't on our agenda, I was just gonna do it under chair report, but there's also, there's, there's some other stuff on signs. So I'm sure your sign guy will come up with drawings like this at, at very little cost. I mean, all these drawings are sign stuff that, you know, people are proposing, and I don't really think they hate this, I don't think that, I think you can come up with the exact sign that you wanna put.
I got it.
Okay, and just ask your sign guy to draw what you want.
Just not the, necessarily the design details that Dennis is gonna be, so. Are you saying you want that here at this point?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so, anything else? Okay, public comment? So there's a lot of audio, so. Comment? Dennis?
I've got a question for planning. Get your opinion on Arminia Gudney's sign. You wanna pass that around? You guys probably have seen that.
Yep.
Kinda get your opinion on, it's a non-commercial sign.
Right.
Commercial sign would be prohibited on a fence like that. What is your opinion with this sign, since it's a community event type thing?
Well, we had a community event thing, and they came in with a request and went through the planning process to do just that.
No, talking about, we had two previously.
There, we actually did it twice. We did it for the fair and the, and the bands in the park.
So you wanted them to come to planning?
Right, but it's an illegal sign other than that.
And what I, I ended up talking to the planner about that, and he suggested to talk to planning and get your opinion, so we could send him a letter stating that they need to come to planning.
Is it, is Suzanne?
Yeah.
As Suzanne said, signs aren't allowed to be put on events.
Correct.
Yeah, but isn't it a temporary sign?
Not allowed to be on events.
What about if you put it in, just in front of the fence?
Excuse me?
What if you put it on a, on a structure in front of the fence? It's not on the fence.
That sure looks like it to me.
I mean, could they have?
Did she say what, it's a what?
What if? I, I, there's, I, I can't answer that. So it depends on where the fence is, how much room you've got from the fence to the sidewalk, what you've got, what your property things are. There are guidelines of where the, the sign can be, so it, it's a hypothetical question, and I can't answer that without a specific request.
What if it was on the building?
It's in the back.
Well, it's something that we would have to look at, so I'm not prepared to answer that question.
We, we actually had a couple instances this year where we had signs on the fence, and it was a commercial-type operation, and they had to come down. And we explained it to the business owner, they did say come down. It clearly shows in the zoning ordinance what's not allowed. Of course, they were happy, but they had to come down. Just like our portable sign by the bank, that had to be moved. We're looking at a corner-type sign going in there possibly, with, with planning commission's input.
So there's really nothing in the ordinance that would allow this sign. So if you have a residential or a commercial area, no sign this size would be allowed without.
It's almost been advertised in years past, was it over the street?
Yeah, but see, when that came to, I don't know how, I'm forgetting if they had a banner over the street, but even the, the fair that has a banner over the street, they, they came to planning.
Yeah, I agree. It's like the same, but I'm wondering, too, as far as alternatives for them.
So just where you put the sign, but it's, Mr. Liu said that it's, it'd be nice just to hang things, but it's, other people have abided by the ordinance, and Mr. Liu's right, this should be likewise.
The reason I'm here is, there's a lot of rumors, well, I know the church sold on teats and, yeah, I always say that street and stuff. There's all kinds of rumors of all kinds of things going on there. I know it's sold, but I would just like to know if there is an ordinance about having a multi-residential, am I saying this right? Can they put in like a, we don't want an apartment going in, we don't want a duplex going in. We're hoping like that that would become just a, another household.
So multifamily versus single family?
Right, exactly. We live in that area, you guys know where I lived, down at End of Prospect, and that's kind of what I'm questioning. The view there is, part of the reason we bought our house, it's residential, it's a beautiful view, we have a horse barn there, and I would be very upset if an apartment complex or duplexes or, you know, housing went in, as opposed to, like it is now, just individual, nice houses.
Well, we don't have anything in front of us, so you can't answer your question. So, but the only way you can make sure that nothing goes into the property that you're talking about is to buy it yourself.
Well, that's not true. We wanna know what the, what the zoning ordinance.
Well, the zoning ordinance, it, it's zoned residential, the church can be in residential property, so there's certain things that can be in residential. Can that be turned into a duplex or a multiple? Yes, it can. It would have to be a special approval land use, but it's just.
Who would approve that land use? I guess that's what I'm hearing.
There would be, there'd be a planning commission issue.
But again, if there's a special approval application for that, you're within three-hundred feet, you'd get notified.
Yes, you'd get notified, so it's a safe thing.
So we would be able to voice our opinion, but not necessarily, I mean, there might be a possibility that if enough people in the area didn't want it, that they would consider that as part of the planning.
Planning vote?
Right. Have they thought about the roads in that area, bringing in trucks, and the, and the, over the bridge and all that?
Well, they, they wouldn't have to bring a truck in, they, they wouldn't have to cross, I, I don't know what you're talking about, a truck.
Roads are in terrible condition in that northwest corner.
Yeah.
And even to increase residential.
I, it's all hypotheticals, cause we don't know what's going in there, but I don't know why a duplex would have to have trucks.
Well, they'd have to tear the church down, wouldn't they, and then have to build?
Well, that's the same thing as a house.
Right.
So you're saying that you couldn't build a house, then? So, cause you're gonna have trucks.
That's probably what I meant, but maybe.
Yeah, so, I, I, you know, at this point in time, we don't have any answers for you other than yes, a duplex could go in, yes, multiple could go in, but it'd be a special approval.
But that, but that's being done now, it's not.
Right, right now, it's zoned residential, but under the ordinance, with special approval, those can be done in residential.
What's the approval?
Is that, however, a multiple can, a duplex can?
I think, all right, man, so I got, I guess, I gotta walk back here. I don't think it should be apartments. It could be, it could, but it could be a duplex with a special approval.
Multiple family duplex.
But that's not our end.
If it's our one, it's not allowed.
It's our one.
Okay, so if any.
It'd only be split duplex. We're concerned about height, obviously.
If it's an existing structure, if they don't do anything with the structure, there's, there's, there's nothing that can make you change that structure.
You lost me.
Okay, you said something about height, so the, the church is existing.
The church is gonna be torn down, we already know that.
Okay, well, you know more than we do.
Well, where does this process start, as far as it, has it, cause we know it's been sold, and so where does it go from there, as far as the process goes?
It goes to a church that, I, I, I don't know, because it depends on who bought it and what they're gonna do with it.
Well, when does that come about?
We never.
When the people that purchased it.
When the person owns it, besides, too.
You don't know who bought it, then?
So it could be months from now, or it could be next month?
Or it could be two years from now.
Well, that's not true. Will we be notified, though, of the planning commission? How do we find out exactly?
Well, again, if you live within, within three hundred feet, and it, and it comes under a special approval land use, the landowners will all be notified within three hundred feet of that property.
But is that before anything has been officially decided, or do we get to say something before it's been?
Okay, so you sat through this meeting.
Yes.
And there's two special approvals that are happening next month. So you saw the process, you come in here, and the special approval meeting is set, the public hearing is set. So that's the first step. The first step is you make an application. Second step is you come to a meeting, we set a public hearing. So after the public hearing, then notices will be sent out, and then you'll have a public hearing after the notices are sent, and I don't know, fifteen days? Fifteen days prior to the meeting, at least fifteen days prior to the meeting.
The public hearing just to be kind of voice your opinion, and then it's all taken under consideration, right? Is that kinda what it is?
Kind of.
If there's an existing structure, then with the church, is there a certain amount of apartments or homes or dwellings that could be within that? Is there some kind of ordinance on size, or?
Well, there's, again, the building is the building, so there's no ordinance on the building, cause it's existing. So the only thing, so it can't be apartments, it can be a duplex, or it can be a single-family house.
So if it was torn down, then any new structure would have to fall under the current ordinances?
Correct, yes. But if they built a regular house, they don't, if you, I don't know if anybody here's built a house, but you don't come to planning for, for a house.
That would be.
The monthly.
We're just worried about multifamily, you know, long duplexes, apartments, so you answered my question about apartments, so that was good to know. Okay, so if it's a multifamily structure, it has to come before you at some point, or it has to be approved at some point?
If it's gonna be more than a single-family residence, yes.
Yes, okay.
And it can't be multiple. And it can't be multiple other than a duplex.
Exactly, two family or duplex is a special approval in the, in the R1.
Okay.
And this is special?
Okay, anything else? Public comments? Okay, so moving on to the public comment section and thanks for your comments. And thanks for coming to the meeting, this is kind of the most we've had in our recollection, in my recollection. So this would be nice if we had more interest throughout meetings and, as kind of said earlier tonight, we do have a vacancy on the planning commission, so if anybody would like to get more involved, it would be greatly appreciated. Okay, so chair report. So we're back to signs, so, what, a decade and a half, we've talked about the sign on the corner by the bank. So we're back to talking about the sign on the corner by the bank. So that one's been removed, the temporary sign's been removed, and I think on a permanent basis? Okay, so, again, there's no application, but there is a request to look at what can go there. So I did get some stuff and nothing fits the ordinance. As you well know from talking about it in the past, so the setbacks aren't there. There's nothing can really go on the corner, but I did meet with Dean from Display Mix. Remember, we approved him, so anyway, so he was quite helpful. So he actually came up with an idea that might work. So everybody's sign is too high, it doesn't fit the corner. So what you have, not for our commission members, but for the audience, both TV viewing and in person, you have a corner, so planning's directive is mainly health, safety and welfare. So the thing with the, the corner sign that we discussed this evening, part of it is safety. Safety of having the sign attached to an older building, that's why we want to see what the sign is before we go ahead and say, okay, this is okay for the sign. But the sign on the corner, you got, like, you pull up to the corner, you got to be able to see around the corner. So if you can't see around the corner, I don't care what the sign says, it's not, it's a safety issue. So everybody likes having a community event sign there, but how do we safely accomplish that? So I think, again, Dean from Display Mix actually came up with something. So instead of having it right on the corner, angle it a little bit, but put it on the Fulton Street side of the street where the setback in the grassy area is actually bigger. I was actually out there tonight with a tape measure and the back of the grass to the center of the road is 64 feet. So I think we're pretty close to being within our guidelines. So it's just really kind of what kind of sign we could, they could put in there and what, what would work. So that being said, we were asked to look at it, I think that's kind of our thing. And then as far as going further, then we'd kind of have to get them to come in with a site plan application and we can kind of go further. But all the stuff that they put in that folder was not.
Is that, is that the stuff, is that for K?
Well, it's K, but it's also something else too, but none of them, none of them work, they're all too tall. Okay, so then, here I have a DVD, I think that's what they're called, from Riley Township and it's their new master plan proposal. So if anybody is, if you've got some extra time and they want to check out Riley's thing. They're having a meeting to discuss this on the 18th of September. So I'm not doing anything, I might go over there if anybody wants to write one, you know. Okay, so then the Fritz thing, I talked to them about a month ago, nothing's really happened since then. So at our last meeting, we approved the Cozy Corner sidewalk tables. So I'd like to say that they've done a really good job of keeping up their end of the, of the requests that we had. So the tables are out there, they move tables in every night, they move the fencing in every night. So that's been pretty good. So leading into that one, now we have, so they came in and are abiding by the guidelines that they were given. There's a bunch of, there's, there's a few entities in the downtown area that had them come in and they have sidewalk sales and they occupy a major section of the walkway.
Entire walkway.
Okay, the entire walkway. So that's disruptive to pedestrian traffic. So, and in the sign ordinance, any sidewalk sale or any sign or protrusion into the sidewalk either has to be approved by planning or by Mr. Lemieux, the building inspector. So in that vein, to help Dennis out with his job, so he doesn't kind of just be the bad guy going around after the fact, I'm proposing that we write a letter to the village council, asking the village council to write all the downtown business people and tell, and make them aware of the guidelines that they need to comply with and how to do so. And so between Becky and I, we've kind of come up with a letter. If it's okay with you guys.
Ben's words.
Thank goodness you can't see this.
It was for Becky and I. It has come to our attention that the C1 district has a problem with sidewalk sales and portable awnings. To alleviate confusion and help out our building inspector make a level playing field, we are requesting village council to write a letter to send to all downtown business operators stating about ordinances. Also to include a section. Section stating ordinance about permits issued by Dennis?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so then I think maybe.
Oh, that's what Dennis would issue the permit.
Dennis would issue that.
So maybe we should send it to C2s just to, beside the C1s. That help out Dennis?
Sure.
So I think then if everybody knows what's going on, I think if.
Yeah, no surprises.
Well, even, even your, you guys' approval for the Cozy, I took that over, talked to the owner about, you know, setbacks and clear road zone or a couple complaints about that, and that was very helpful. But to actually have a permit, we know when they're going to put it out, it could be helpful.
Well, I think it's in the sign ordinance, didn't we write that into the sign ordinance? I'm pretty sure that we did.
It's not in that.
It's not.
The new one's not in that.
Oh, the new one's not in that.
Yeah, but I think it's in the new one, that if you did something in a sign or had a sidewalk sale, if it was only from this month to this month.
Yes.
And you could, you could have it, but.
Yes, yes, yes.
They had to have an approval from the administration on it.
Yeah.
And they have to keep a certain walkway, they have to keep that five foot main walkway open at all times, so that would mean that you really couldn't have anything other than, depending on the amount of concrete in front of your building, that most buildings have about six, six to seven feet.
During the fair, we had two of them that were on the sidewalk and one of them, we're discussing with them and one of them wasn't too happy about it, the other one, you know, kind of complied, but, you know, I guess they figured during the fair, it was fair game to put it up.
Well, I think.
It would be awful to send letters out.
I think if we, if we let them know what the ordinance is, then it's a lot easier rather than after the fact.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you guys.
Can we have signs in the bump outs?
Excuse me?
Can they put signs in the bump outs?
No, no.
Okay.
Because that, that's public property, so that would have to come to council because that's in the right of way and everything, nothing can be put in the right of way by anybody without council approval. So that's directly against the anything. So maybe we should put that in.
It only affects a few of them still.
Well, basically.
Anyone could want to put something there, so I would, I'd add that to it as well.
Yeah.
Well, basically, the sidewalk is covered under the right of way.
Right.
Any right of way, so that would affect any right of way, not just the sidewalks. Whether it's a bumbone, whether it's a boulevard.
I think maybe just that includes the bump out in there.
Yeah, we should probably say that. So how about this, Becky and I will finish drafting a letter, she can email it to you guys. If that's okay, then I'll sign it and send it to council. Okay, so that's it. Like to thank everybody for coming, hopefully you've enjoyed yourself and you'll come back next month. You got it.
Okay, motion to close the meeting at 8:30 PM.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We're still holding a meeting, so even though that you guys are done, we're not. So you could be quiet until we're done. Thank you.
Well, we're done, can we go?
Yes, you can go, just go.
Quietly.
Quietly. Okay, so sorry for the interruption, we're trying to close the meeting.
Motion to close the meeting at 8:34 PM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now you can get annoyed.